Everybody. I'm sorry, I've got a little late this year. We're doing the agenda review session for Wednesday, April 20th, 2016. We have ordinances on second reading. 601, orders to amend and supplement revised general orders in the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter 10 dot 16, Stopping, Standing, and Parking. Section 10, 16, 050, Schedule 29, Time limit Parking, Somerset Street. 602, In Orders to amend and supplement revised general orders in the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter 10, 16, Stopping, Standing, and Parking. Section 10, 16, 210, Schedule 38, Time limit Parking Areas, Somerset Street. We have 603, Orders to amend and supplement revised general orders in the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter 10, 20, Handicap Parking Section, 10, 20, 010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons. Adding 5. 7, Loveberry Avenue, 207 Howard Street, 29 Lewis Street, 177 Lawrence Street, 317 Sanford Street, Apartment 2. 604, In Orders to Exceed Municipal Budget Appropriation Limits and Establish a Cap Bank. Orders on first reading. 605, Bond Orders Provided for 2016 Capital Improvement Program by and in the city of New Brunswick in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey. Appropriating $6,176,975, therefore, and authorize of debt an amount of $5,882, requiring a down payment of $294,975. 606, Bond Orders Provided for Various Improvements to the City Water -- I'm sorry, to the Water System by and in the city of New Brunswick. In the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $2,216,000, therefore, authorizing the issuance of $2,416,000 bonds and notes to finance the cost thereof. 607, Bond Orders Provided for Various Capital Provements for the Source System by and in the city of New Brunswick. In the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,500,000, therefore, authorizing the issuance of $1,500,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Resolutions. 645, Approve Agenda Amendments. 646, Approve Payrolls. 647, Authorize Refund for Redeemed Tax Sale Certificates. 648, Approve Request for Use of City Property requested by Rutgers University, Pakistani Student Association, Location in New Wilo Park Pavilion. For picnic for Pakistani Student Organization, date Friday, April 29, 2016, time 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. 649, Approve Request for Use of City Property requested by Rutgers University Center for Global Education. Location in New Wilo Park Pavilion for barbecue farewell to international students. Date is Monday, May 2nd, 2016, time is 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. 650, Approve Resolution Authorization to Enter Into An Agreement with Electronic Recyclers International Incorporated for E-Waste Recycling, Term is one year from May 1st, 2016 to April 30th, 2017. 651, Approve Amendment of Resolution R. 021627, Reason to Pay Final Legal Fees in the amount of $1,064,45 to Peter A. DeMarco Jr. of DeMarco and Gagliano, to Detective Keith Walcott in matter of Isaiah Jordan versus John Quick, from 2,007, 16, 65 to 4,003, 61, 10. 652, Is Held to Request by Administrator. 653, Approve Request for Use of City Property requested by Michael Spagre. Location, Martin Square Park for peaceful political rally and get out the voting there. Friday, May 13, 2016, time 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. 654, Approve Emergency Temporary Appropriations for 2016. 655, Is Held to Request by Administrator. 656, Approve Request for Use of City Property requested by Mark Namsor and Mary E. O'Brien. Location in New Wilo Park for 1.5 mile, 1 point mile walk to benefit physicians who work at RWJUH. Date is Sunday, May 22, 2016, to time is 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. 657, Approve Request for Street Clos requested by Our Lady of Not Carmel Roman Catholic Church. Morris Street to George Street to New Street, Lewis Avenue returning to Morris Street Church Edge for celebrated feast of Corpus Christi. Date is Sunday, May 29, 2016, time is 12:45 p.m. to 1:30 p.m. Police Extra Duty. 658, Approve Amendment of Resolution R. 011657, Reason to Pay Legal Fees in the amount of $1,088 to Lawrence Pittman, Detective Christopher Borheimer in matter of Rodriguez versus City of New Brunswick, from $23,086 to $24,174. 659, Approve Amendment of Resolution R. 051573, Change Order Number 1 with the Lane Contract before created. Railroad Avenue Pump Station Approve, specification number 846-14TR, amounts 4,075776. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20 percent or more of the original contract. 660, Approve Request for Street Clos requested by Hungarian Civic Association, Locations of Streets to be Closed. Bethany Street from end of Hungarian America Federation to Somerset Street, Plum Street from 66 Plum Street to Somerset Street. Somerset Street from Bethany Street to Divinity Street for Annual Hungarian Festival. The date is Saturday, June 4th, 2016. Time is 8:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. Police Extra Duty. 661, Approve Request for Street Clos requested by Garden State Track Club. Location, College Avenue Senior Street, Sitecar Street, and Bartlett Street. For fifth annual College Avenue Mile, One Mile Race, date Saturday, June 4th, 2016. Time is 4:15 p.m. to 8:15 p.m. Police Extra Duty. 662, Approve Request for Use of City Property requested by Omega Phi Alpha, Location in New Wilo Park Pavilion. Family Day brunch, Father's Day, Alumni Fair. Date is Sunday, May 1st, 2016, time is 10:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. 663, Approve Amendment of Resolution R. 121556, Reason to Pay Municipal Legal Fees in the amount of $2,004,000 to Lawrence Pittman, Police Officer Daniel Benziner in matter of Los, Senior versus City of New Brunswick, from $24,671 to $27,000. 664, Approve Request for Street Clos requested by Antioch Christian Church and Strong Foundation. Oliver Avenue between Class Place and Roosevelt Street for Community Fun Event, date Saturday, July 9, 2016. Rain date is Saturday, July 26, 2016, time is 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Is that right? It's gotta be 8:00 a.m. to 8:00. Okay? Police Extra Duty. You're probably typo. 665, Authorize Payment for Emergency Procurement and Warrant Utility. Startup Emergency Generator and Water Treatment Plant, MCC Room with Trace Electrical Services and Testing LLC. Not to exceed $26,620. Purchase Order Number D872843. 666, Authorize Payment for Emergency Procurement. 40 to Repair and Paint Water Break on Georgia's Road with Naffy Contrax Corporation, not to exceed $10,242. Purchase Order Number D86730. 667, Approve On-Premise Raffle Merchandise, Week Stay at Condo at the Elgin, Ed Lewis Avenue, for JDRF International Mid Jersey Chapter, date May 13, 2016. 668, Approve On-Premise Raffle Merchandise, Wine at the Elgin, Ed Lewis Avenue, for JDRF International Mid Jersey Chapter. Date May 13, 2016. 669, Authorize Houses and Materials Cost Recovery Agreement with the Middlesex County Department of Public Safety and Health. Three-year term, 16, 17, and 18. 670, Approve Award Contract with Absolute Fire Protection Company Incorporated for Fire Engine Product Service, 12-month period commencing April 21, 2016, and ending April 20, 2017. Specification Number 50216P, not to exceed $25,000. 671, Authorize Shared Service Agreement with Bunch of Port of Education, Reversion for the School Safety Program for 2016, 17 school year. The amount $652,679. 672, Authorize Shared Service Agreement with Bunch of Port of Education for Reversion for the Entra-School Program, Sister Cities Program, for the 2016, 27 school year. Amount is $1,446,700. 667, Authorize Shared Service Agreement with Bunch of Port of Education, Reversion for Use of Various City Parks, Parks, and Transfer Rule and Mates Course for the 2016, 2017 school year. The amount is $1,494,66. 674, Approve Extension of License to Bankruptcy Trustee for Sri and the Brunt LLC Liquor Lexus, Number 121433029010. 675, Resolution to Authorize Adoption of the City of New Brunswick Employee Handbook. 676, Authorize Tax Letter to Issue Do-Looking Tax Sales Certificates, Block 420, Lot 56. Certificate Number 150462. Block 554, Lot 01801, Certificate Number 150531. 677, Authorize Refund to U.S. Bank Customer for PC6 LLC, Australian against Block 59603, Lot 1.06, Qualifier C1223, Against Utilities in the amount of 80255. 678, Approve Release of Performance Guarantee, Promise Torts of God, Road Opening Permit Number 9346, the amount is $5,716,08. 679, Approve Request of City Engineer. 680, Approve Relaxation of City Orders, Orders in Lane Charging by TG Side Service and Line Charging, Placing Boom Truck on the Southbound Lane of George Street between Church and Old Missions, Decline the Chase Back Sign in 390 Short Street. Dates, Saturday, April 23rd, April 30th, and May 21st, 2016. Alternative Dates, Saturday, May 28th, June 4th, and June 11th, 2016, time 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. 681, Approve Relaxation of City Orders requested by Jay Support and Sun Trucking and Brinkin Company. Crane Lift at RWJ Cancer Center located at 195 Little Lobney Street. Dates, Saturday, April 3rd, 2016, Sunday, May 1st, 2016. Saturday, May 7th, 2016. Saturday, May 14th, 2016. Sunday, May 15th, 2016. Saturday, May 21st, 2016. And Sunday, May 27th, 2016. Time is 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. 682, Approve Relaxation of City Orders requested by Jason Poole and Sun Trucking and Brinkin Company. Crane Lift at Johnson &amp; Johnson World Headquarters Tower located at 3 Old Misses Streets. Dates, Saturday, April 30th, 2016. Sunday, May 1st, 2016. Saturday, May 7th, 2016. Saturday, May 4th, 2016. Sunday, May 15th, 2016. Saturday, May 21st, 2016. And Sunday, May 22nd, 2016. Time is 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. 683, Approve Request of City Engineer. 684, Authorize Shared Service Agreement with the City of New Brunswick and North Brunswick Township for Animal Control Services provided by the City of New Brunswick and North Brunswick Township. 12-month period commencing May 4th, 2016, and ending May 3rd, 2017, not to exceed $40,000. 685, Approve Award Contract with Bloom Inc., Cattle's Incorporated for Cattle Services through the Division of Animals Control. 12-month period commencing March 24, 2016, and ending March 23, 2017. Specification Number 50716RP, not to exceed $42,000, Fair and Open, Non-Pro-Talk. 686, Approve Request for Use of City Side, requested by Rutgers Fossil Fuel Digestment. Location, Beginning of Douglas Campus, George Street, Ethnical to Somerset Street to Brown Commons, College Avenue for Earth Day Marks to Raise Awareness of Environmental Issues. Dates, Friday, April 22nd, 2016, time is 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. 687, Approve Amendment Resolution R. 041632, Reason to Rent the Hours for the Event. Approve Request for Use of City Property requested by Josephine Elaine Morivas. Location, Royal Park Earth Day Sustainability Festival with Ceremonial Tree Plan. Dates, Saturday, April 23rd, 2016. Rain date, Sunday, April 24th, 2016. Time is 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We have no other to discuss by the council. That's the whole standup. Thank you. We now call the meeting to order. The clerk, please form the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Here.
Council President Egan?
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the York Public Meetings Act have been complied with and satisfied in that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of municipal council in the city of New Brunswick as a filed by the city clerk have been placed on appropriate bulletin board of the lobby of City Hall in New Jersey and have been transmitted to the official use office of the city of New Brunswick, namely the whole district. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Can we have a moment of silence for our men and women serving in our armed forces, for our men and women in armed forces who lost their lives in battle, for any reason? We have minutes from March 2nd, 2016. Have you approved on the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We have ordinances on second reading. We have 601, Orders to amend and supplement revised general orders in the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter 10, 16, Stopping, Standing, and Parking. Section 10, 16, 050, Schedule 29, Time limit Parking, Somerset Street. Anybody from the public would like to speak on this particular ordinance? Anybody from the public? Seina?
Move your hands.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 602, In Orders to amend and supplement revised general orders in the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter 10, 16, Stopping, Standing, and Parking. Section 10, 16, 210, Schedule 38, Time limit Parking Areas, Somerset Street. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Anybody from the public? Seina?
Can you clarify what this is and what kind of time?
So you would like to comment, ma'am?
Sorry?
Would you like to comment on this particular ordinance?
Is question, do you have a comment? I mean...
Is it... Could you stand up, please?
Yeah, I just want to know what kind of timer you're gonna impose, what kind of change you're gonna make to the current ordinance.
Mr. Puzy?
I don't completely understand anything.
I'm sorry. Who can answer that?
Mr. Valenti.
Okay. Doc, could you help us with that, Mr. Valenti?
Yes.
Do you have a written address that you want to comment on?
Susan Miller, 249 Galavan Street, New Brunswick.
Thank you.
Yeah, this was an attempt to clean up some flawed descriptions in our current ordinance specific to Somerset Street on the, we used to do the St. Theodore's High School side of the street. There was a conflicting description of what was a two-hour parking versus a school zone and a special parking zone. So it's a, basically, we're clearing up a flawed description in the previous ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to comment on this particular ordinance? Seina?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 603, Orders to amend and supplement revised general orders in the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter 10, 20, Handicap Parking Section, 10, 20, 010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons. Adding 5. 7, Loveberry Avenue, 207 Howard Street, 29 Lewis Street, 177 Lawrence Street, 317 Sanford Street, Apartment 2. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Anybody from the public on this ordinance? Seina?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
We have 604, In Orders to Exceed Municipal Budget Appropriation Limits and Establish a Cap Bank. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Anybody on this particular ordinance? Seina?
Move your hands.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes. I'm not going to read all these three again. This is 605, because we can't comment on them anyway from the beginning. So we have organ 605, need a motion for...
Move your hands setting down Wednesday, May 4th, at 6:30 p.m. for public hearing, same day to be advertised.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 606. Move your hands.
I won't, I'm sorry. That's all right. Move your hands setting...
You did so good.
I'm sorry. Move your hands setting down Wednesday, May 4th, at 6:30 p.m. for public hearing, same day to be advertised.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes. And we have organ 607.
Move your hands setting down Wednesday, May 4th, at 6:30 p.m. for public hearing, same day to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Thank you. We have resolutions. We have resolutions 601 to 687, holding 652, 655, 679, and 687. Would anybody from the public like to comment on any of the particular resolutions this evening? Anybody on the resolutions? Seina?
Move your hands. Move the resolutions. Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Thank you. We will now have the public portion of the meeting. If anybody would like to come up and address the council on anything, please step up to the microphone. You have five minutes to address the council. Anybody at all, step right up to the microphone. Please add your name and address, please.
Ah, yes, my name is Danielle Morris, at 188 Walker Street. First, I'd like to start off, wow, whatever that drink is, Councilmember Fleming, wow, making you joy, happiness, maybe you ought to give it to the rest of them. Maybe bring some joy with them also. I've never seen you so happy before at a meeting. Pass it along. First, I'd like to say thank you for a partial job that the city did do on Joyce Comer and Handy. It wasn't a good job, but at least I'm glad to see they tried to do something. Now, my question is, do you, do any of you feel when I tell you something is unsafe, do you, uh, do you feel that I'm telling the truth? Do you believe what I'm saying? When I tell you something's unsafe?
Absolutely.
Oh, then tell me, absolutely, if you feel that you would take my, take my word on something being safe, then please, when I told the council members March 2nd at the meeting that it was a young girl hit on the corner of Lee and Lawrence Street, did I see the city take action? No, they didn't. Now, due to where the city took action this morning, due to where the word got back to what I was taking pictures of, where you had your police officer making markings, putting up the mobile speed, the speed thing, so how can you tell me that you really take me serious if now you're responding now? That's been over a month and a half ago.
So let me ask you a question. So you're saying that the complaint was that there should be something done on which corner?
Yeah, yes. Oh, believe me, when I gave you, I gave you picture, that was from starting from Lee and Howard Street, all the way, all the way down to the dead end. You have no security things, no, no walk, no pedestrian walkways, these streets are horrible. Wow, but going from Lee, Power Street down, on every corner you have walkways, you have watch out for our children, the speed limit is 25 miles per hour, and you have speed bumps. And getting to my main point, where I told you this is dangerous, two weeks after that girl got hit, with the city still didn't do nothing, he had another motor vehicle accident. And I, I was told not to use his name, but one of the fire crews where he was a witness, I, I was told that I couldn't use his name. And wow, like I said, what do you know? That was Thursday. Made a major accident on the same corner three times in a month and a half. It's on record. What did the city do? The boy is up in a coma at Robinwood Johnson Thursday where, what, motorcycle crash with a car. So yes, I fought the city where they should have did something if you take me serious the first time. So please, well, like I said, even though this morning you took action, but I hope from taking action with this meeting, yes, you do some major work on Lee Avenue, make it safe for these people, due to where I know a lot of them, they're scared to come out to protest to the city, but I'm not. So believe me, normally how I, I didn't come to the last two meetings where, oh, I said I'd give you guys a break, no complaining, think you would do something. Wow, nothing to be done. But the, the pain is done. Like I said, that boy is up there fighting for his life. He's lucky to be alive, the way that crash was with the motorcycle.
So you're telling me if the intersection was the way that you wanted, that that accident would have never happened?
Oh, not that I, not, not the way I wanted. Well, believe me, like people say, where it should be in a safer way.
Ma'am, so what you're saying, the work that we do will prevent any more accidents from happening there?
Oh, it's possible, yes.
Okay, but it's possible that it won't, though, right?
Uh, believe, believe me, like I said, if you start putting up like, ooh, speed limit 25 miles per hour, ooh, walkways to let no, uh, like same thing I told you with Handy Street, to let these cars know where to stop, less pedestrian, no parking to corners, the yellow paint, like I said, nothing is safe in that area, because the city has not done what, like I said, I have the pictures to prove, the city has nothing done. The only street that is done from that going up, that's Juliet and Lee, that, the only street that has a walkway. So please, like I said, normally unless I see something super dangerous, yes, I, I hope the city will do something, or believe me, this would be a lovely write-up. Three, three, three big major incidents in, on one corner, so something has to be wrong. So please tell me, will you respond to this soon as possible?
We'll look into it.
Oh, you will look into it?
Yes.
Oh, like I said, okay, like I said, I gave you time, but believe me, I...
Thank you for giving us time.
Oh, well, believe me, due to where, wow, you're not, you're not talking like we really care, maybe this doesn't go...
We definitely care. We have a big city here, ma'am. You act like we, we don't, just because we don't get to your problem right away, that we're not doing something else. And there's prejudice where you think there is, because these people have walkways on this side of the street, and they don't have them on this side of the street, that somebody's got some kind of conspiracy behind for that part of the town. That's the way I, that's the way you come across. So now that you've told me how I come across, I want to let you know that we're going to do everything we can to make it safer. We will definitely look into it. Thank you very much. Your time is up. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Yes, Susan Miller, 249 Galavan Street, New Brunswick.
Good evening.
I'm, I'm coming here today because of a problem that's a persistent problem on our block. We have street sweeping, and it's often really completely ineffective or nearly completely ineffective. I brought pictures to show, um...
The street cleaning is ineffective?
Yeah, look, this is, this is the street just after the street cleaning was finished. Let me sublease to you. Yeah? It's, it's ridiculous.
What, what street is it on?
Galavan Street. We, we pay for this street cleaning because we, we all forget occasionally to move our cars for the street cleaning.
Right.
And, and we get fined, $25. Now, if I'm going to be fined, right? I want street cleaning.
So let me get this right. You didn't move your car?
No, I did.
And you got a ticket?